Good morning. Welcome to this joint meeting of the New Hanover County Board of Education and Board of Commissioners. I'd like to call this meeting to order. Ms. Bowie, could you please call the role for the Board of Education?
Good morning. We have Stephanie Adams.
Here.
Nelson Boyer.
Here.
G.D. Justice. Stephanie Cravill.
Here.
P. McManus.
Here.
Stephanie Walker.
Here.
And Pete Wildebohr.
Present.
Thank you.
I'd like to call this New Hanover County Commissioner meeting to order. According to New Hanover County's Administrative Policy for Face Coverings on County Property, individuals from the public who participate in indoor meetings of New Hanover County Boards and Committees are required to properly wear face coverings and exemptions will not be recognized. This includes when individuals address the Board during public comments, face coverings must be worn during your remarks. In addition, anyone who disrupts a meeting will not be allowed to remain in the meeting. The Sheriff's Office will ensure compliance with these conditions. Thank you. I want to thank everyone for being here today. I'm glad we could bring our partners from across the county together to help find solutions to ensure an incident like we had on Monday never happens again. We must keep guns and weapons out of our schools, and the county is committed to helping law enforcement and our school district with the resources they need to ensure that happens. But I know and I understand that it's not just as simple as preventing guns from entering our schools. There's more to this conversation, like the violence in our community, which is playing out on school grounds. We also have to do more to strengthen violence prevention resources and education, as well as mental health support and crisis intervention for our students. We must do more community-wide to combat what we are seeing and experiencing. So I'm glad you're all here, so there are different perspectives, tactics, and ideas brought to the table today. I believe we all have the same goal, and today's conversation will lead to actions being taken to ensure our schools are as safe as possible, our children and school staff are provided with the resources and help they need, and that a life-altering incident like the one at New Hanover High School doesn't happen again. I look forward to hearing from each of you.
Thank you. All right, next item on the agenda is the approval of the agenda. Do I hear a motion?
So moved.
Thank you, Mr. Boyer. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Wildebohr. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed?
Aye.
Great, thank you. Agenda is approved. Next item on the agenda is a moment of appreciation. Good morning, everyone. My name is Stephanie Adams. I am Chair of the New Hanover County Board of Education. I want to thank the county commissioners for scheduling this meeting to share information and increase collaboration between the county government and the school district. Additionally, thank you to the Mayor of Wilmington for joining this important discussion. Our collective ability to coordinate and communicate was put to the test on Monday when a conflict between two students escalated to become a shooting at New Hanover High School. I want to thank our first responders, particularly our New Hanover County Sheriff's Office and the Wilmington Police Department. Law enforcement responded quickly to protect the safety of our students and staff and investigated the incident. New Hanover High School's staff members protected students and followed their school safety plans, evacuating children safely to Williston Middle School and the International School at Gregory. You are truly heroes to our students and our community. New Hanover County Agencies and employees also supported our students and staff. New Hanover County Health Department and Trillium Health Resources were quick to provide social, emotional support to students impacted by the trauma of the morning. We are thankful for our community partners, including St. Paul's Episcopal Church, which cared for our special needs students until we could unify students with their parents and guardians. The New Hanover County Schools Crisis Team, school counselors, social workers, and other staff members performed admirably and were supported by our central office staff. They have continued to support our students, staff, and families throughout this week and will continue to do so. In many ways, our county came together to wrap support around us in a time of need, and I believe every member of the Board of Education is grateful. After every crisis, we have an opportunity to reflect and analyze what worked. We also look for gaps we need to fill. What additional steps can we take to prevent violence in our schools? And how can we engage our families in conflict resolution to make schools and communities safer? The school district has already taken steps to address gaps in communication with parents, and I believe there's more we can do. We can coordinate and communicate better with law enforcement, and I want to work with our county leaders on a comprehensive plan to keep schools safe. A truly comprehensive plan requires more than one solution, more than one tool. We have heard from many people in our community, and we are grateful for their feedback and engagement in the discussion. Today, the stakeholders at this table have an opportunity to discuss lessons learned, ask questions, and share ideas for solutions and next steps. We need to do our homework, research, and develop a well-thought-out plan to prevent violence in our campuses. Our approach must also enlist the participation of parents and partners. I appreciate your support and the opportunity to meet as a collaborative group focused on student safety, and I look forward to working with all of you. Thank you. Our next item on the agenda, our lessons learned, and we are going to begin this conversation with Sheriff McMahon with the New Hanover County Sheriff's Department. I would like to just share a comment with this. You know, this incident happened four days ago, and there is still a lot to unpack. And so this opportunity for us to meet and share strategies, share ideas, and reflect on what has gone on is a first step, and so we appreciate the sheriff being with us today and if you would like to start us off with some of the lessons that we have been able to take away from Monday's incident.
Absolutely. So thank you for allowing us to be here. And I want to start first by, again, publicly thanking our law enforcement partners, and you know Wilmington Police Department is here, and they're here for us to support us in the SROs and in anything else we need. And that Monday morning, when I got the call that you never, ever want to get, of course, I came right to the school within just a few minutes. I was inside the school at the principal's office, and what I saw, I just want to make sure the community knows how proud I am of the men and women of law enforcement. So you know, the first SRO, which happened to be the deputy, because we have PD there also, was there within 30 seconds. He was right around the corner, and he was there within 30 seconds administering first aid to the victim. And the law enforcement that I saw and their professionalism, how many were there and well-coordinated. But what I also saw were the teachers. I know I was by the principal, I was by, I believe, Assistant Principal Ms. Cannon, and any teacher I saw walking students out, they were rock stars. They were calm, they were taking care of the children, they were keeping everybody as calm as possible, and it just, it was well-organized chaos, if you want to call it that way. So since then, of course, we have increased law enforcement presence, and you know, like Stephanie said, this is not something that only one of us can fix, or it's everybody. It's all of us working together and looking at ways that we can get better. What has been very helpful to us has been the students and the parents have been very engaged in giving us information, and that's good. That's what it's going to take. It's going to take those that are in there, the students, the teachers, which already do that, the parents, any information that you have as a parent, as a student, get it to us so that we can vet it, we can look at it, because that's the best way. It's just like you hear us talking about in the community when we have crimes, if the community talks to us and gives us information, we can solve those crimes. If our community, which are the students and the parents, will give us information, we can stop the crimes, we can be more proactive rather than just reactive. So I think what I would ask, after every critical incident, we always dig very deeply to see how can we be better. We have emergency plans in place, we practice, but there's nothing, nothing ever replaces the real thing. So this was a horrible incident, something that we prayed would never happen. It did. So what I would ask of the boards is to allow law enforcement to work with the superintendent's office and kind of coordinate through the manager's office and see, let us really look deeply to see how can we get better, because there's always room for improvement. And it's very fresh, we haven't had a chance to really dig deep into it, but my biggest takeaway from being out there when it was happening was the professionalism of the principal, all the school staff, and all law enforcement.
Thank you very much, Sheriff Van. We'll go over to Dr. Faust next to share some reflections from the school side, and we will open it up to questions after both have had the opportunity to speak.
So one of the, well, several of the lessons that we have learned just from this incident is definitely how quickly we roll out communication, and when we are in a situation as such, how quickly we need to get it out. We know that our community was wanting it. We were in the midst of planning what does it look like for the psychological side, and making sure that the principal was able to stand up and share, because everyone wants to hear from the principal, and making sure that he was okay, and that he can actually stand up and tell what needs to happen, because this is still, it's still under investigation. So we are turning over things to the law enforcement. We are assisting them in making sure that they have blueprints, whatever they needed. We were there in addition to making sure that students are safe. And so when we had our students over at the school, I think that was probably one of the things that individuals said, well, we didn't know how our students were, where they were. And students were divided up into three categories, the auditorium, the gym, and, oh my gosh, there was another. So in three different sections. What happened was, there's like 1,500 kids, and they, we were in a crisis moment, and getting everyone safely out of that building into those spots, having students sign in as they're coming so that we can make sure when a parent calls or a parent comes, we can release that student to that parent. And that did take place, it just didn't take place as if it would come to an office. So a teacher may have not been with her child or her class, because during that moment, there were different kids in different classes. The goal was to get students into a safe place. And so there may have been students that were in the hallway where teachers pulled them into their classroom to go into that lockdown mode. So when it came time for checking a role or a parent to have to wait for their child, or we had to radio, and we had some in the cafeteria, and then you have to understand, it's heightened, everyone's emotion is heightened, and so it's not quiet. And so it was chaotic. It was chaotic, but the goal and what we are most pleased with is that it, that part, we had everyone in a safe place. And there were several, and I don't know the number of how many officers, we had all for state troopers from Raleigh, we had police officers from UNC Wilmington, we had our police department here in Wilmington, we had our sheriff's deputy, we had the sheriff, we had SWAT team, everyone was in place, teachers were there. It just wasn't pretty. And I think that was probably one of the things, if we go back and look at it, I don't know how to clean that up, because the goal was to get them to a safe spot. And when doing that, you just go right into tragedy mode, and I'll say it's triage, how do we get these, these kids are safe here? All right, who do we have in this room? And then when we have to listen for the parent, and then making sure that the parents know where to go in picking up the students. And I know there'll be a question asked as to why we move from one place to the next place, and I'll let the law enforcement speak on that. Another lesson learned is, and we knew this, but just letting everyone know, yes, our principal is in charge. In a situation when, as such, when there is law enforcement needed, law enforcement becomes the superior in that role. No longer, the principal is making sure that we can, principals, superintendent, we are making sure that we know how to go, but we're listening for commands from our sheriff's department, police officers, those individuals. We're no longer in control at that point. And so it's not principal or my role to say when it's safe to move. That's not, and so I think those are things that we have to communicate to everyone so that they know that we didn't, we weren't told to move kids until it was safe for them to move. And so that's really important for us to understand, and you know, when it was safe to move, they moved. And they moved everyone over to the building that needed to be, and every one of our buildings has what we call a secondary safety place. And there are sometimes multiple places that we do, and we don't actually pronounce those out to the public where we, where those places are, because of course, that's what's called a safety plan, but that does happen. But we, I think we need to share more on saying that we do have safety, so safety protocols in place, we just can't tell the public where our safety protocol is. We can't say if, you know, when the door's locked, when the doors are open, that type of thing. But one thing I do want to clarify is that, to everyone who is, may have some apprehension, is that, yes, the breezeway is open, someone from the outside can, but they can't get in the building. The building is locked, so you can't go, even if you walk up that breezeway, you can't get in that building. So there, that's a safety thing, and there's safety protocol of how that opens and when that opens, but that's something that we need for everyone to understand, is that that building isn't unlocked. As you know, it's downtown, it's on the Market Street, it's divided by Market Street, so we have buildings on both sides, but that building is securely locked. And so that's one of the things that we need to do, we have to let everyone know, and maybe those are things from the communication side that we need to make sure that parents, community members know that our buildings are locked, they are securely locked at all times, except when we open them. We also want individuals to know that there was communication when parents were emailing us about they hadn't heard, they hadn't heard. I understand that wholeheartedly. I understand. When we did our press conference, we were still here, still trying to find facts, and the communication from the principal didn't go out until about 8:10 that night, I'm sorry, the next day. When we came back, they were still at the school working. So there was Monday where we were here, working with them to let, we were planning for the staff and what we needed from them. And a big, big shout-out to all of our support on the mental health side. Those individuals, like we, didn't have to ask the county, the county just kind of, they just stepped in and helped us and provided a hotline, and that hotline is still available for individuals. So making sure that was communicated, and they were communicating things to us and tweeting things and helping us. Those are things where lesson learned, we didn't have to do a command post, we were just working in tandem, and those are the, that's when brilliant minds come together. But the next day, Tuesday is where it was, we worked, we were working with the staff, what does it look like when kids come back in that building? And so parents were upset because they didn't know how safe is it going to be? And we had additional officers, we couldn't say that we were going to have 200 officers in the building. That violates safety protocols. So helping people understand, and when, I think the word is used here is transparency, well, in that safety issue, we can't actually communicate crystal clear what's on a piece of paper that we have, because then that transparency is violated through the safety protocols. But I can say that going over and having senior staff over there, and I think that's been a daily thing, where someone from our office has been over there to support, to work with the team to ensure, and we've got to set up more meetings, we've got to figure out what else is needed in that building. So sitting down with the sheriff, sitting down with the county, and saying, these are things that we have learned from this situation, because right now it's still a live investigation. We're doing our part, we're doing our investigation, sheriff's office is doing their investigation, and everyone, we've got to put it together. And we just hadn't had that opportunity to sit down and hash out, this is what we did, this is what we saw, this is what you saw. It's still safety, and they actually, I'll say, they surpassed by expectation with what safety looks like in a building. But those are some of the lessons learned, and I have a whole list of other things that we need to work with.
Okay, thank you.
Stephanie, I just got a text that the live meeting is going out.
Good too. Oh. Just to give the live feed, the test has gone out. If you could take a look for that, please? We can just pause for a moment?
We have a power issue at our NHCTV station. I think it's still on.
Oh.
New Hanover County Schools YouTube, but NHCTV is rebooting right now.
All right, NHCTV is rebooting, so if you are currently, that is where the outage is, we are still streaming live on NHCS YouTube. All right, thank you. All right, before we move into some questions regarding the lessons learned, in my excitement to get going on this discussion, I didn't give everyone an opportunity to introduce themselves, who was around the table, so I would just like to go to my right, if everyone could please just say your name and who you represent here today.
Nelson Boyer, Board of Ed's Chair.
Stephanie Cravill, Board of Education.
P. McManus, Board of Education.
Pete Wildebohr, Board of Education.
Stephanie Walker, Board of Education.
Van David, District Attorney.
Ken Sorensen, Chief Deputy, New Hanover County Sheriff's Office.
Ed McMahon, Sheriff.
David Oliver, Assistant Chief of Police, Wilmington Police Department.
Batman.
Charles.
Jake Corbin, Chief of Court, Doug.
Dr. Faust is going to keep going. He's like, of course, it's Batman. Got it.
Charles Faust, Superintendent.
Good morning, Chris Coudray, County Manager.
Senator, to your name.
Jules Saffo, Mayor.
Good morning, Rob Zappel, New Hanover County Commission.
Jill Rockman, Bar, County Commissioner.
Jonathan Barfield, County Commissioner.
I'm Deb Hayes, Vice Chair, County Commissioner, and can I be Catwoman? Well, he's Rob, can't be Rob.
Julia Olson-Bosman, County Commissioner, Chair.
Thank you very much, and I apologize for not having done that earlier in this session. All right, I'd like to open the floor for questions. Yes, Mayor Saffo.
Well, I think what we witnessed on Monday was something I never thought would happen in New Hanover County, but it did. And you know, Columbine changed CROs in high schools, Sandy Hook changed CROs in elementary schools, and this is a day of reckoning for our community and our school system. We have a lot of parents that are concerned about the safety of their kids. And unfortunately, whether we like it or not, we begin to see younger and younger kids that are having access to firearms. 15-year-olds, 14-year-olds, we see them on the street, you guys arrest them, we see it, and it's scary. And we have no mechanism of conflict resolution anymore. The school grounds where people would get in fights in the old days, where they would resolve their issues with fights, which has been going on since people went to school, are now sometimes resolved with handguns. And we were lucky, we didn't lose a life one day. We were really, really lucky. I guess some of the things that I would hope that the school system and the county looks at is obviously safety protocol for those kids that are going to school. I think there are a lot of parents that are concerned right now. Obviously, they want to support the school, but they're afraid to send their kids to school because they don't know what might happen. And what's happening outside of the school grounds today is as important to us as what's happening inside that school, because what we're seeing today is 24-hour-a-day bullying, cyberbullying, because social media has changed the landscape of how kids interact with each other. And I think if we have information where we're seeing that or we're hearing about that, how is it that we can interact with these kids before they get to school or before they have that altercation? I know that Judge Corbin, y'all have teen court where, and I believe it's still in existence, where kids, if they've had an incident at school, instead of getting suspended, they come together, they talk about their differences, they sign an agreement, and everything is usually okay. I think that's been a very successful program here, and I would hope that we could use some more of that concept to resolve some of these differences. You know, getting to Dr. Faust, we had a lot of commentary from parents that were concerned about their kids, how that information is disseminated through the PTAs maybe early on as to where kids would go if there is an active shooter, or if there is an incident in a high school, I think is very important. I think parents just want to know where their kids are, where they can go pick them up, how long is it going to take? I think just having that fluid communication with the public and with the parents is tantamount, because a lot of parents just didn't know. They were going to Williston, they were going to the MLK Center, and I also want to thank those staffs for all the work they did there, but I think better communication with PTAs and with parents, I think, would go a long way. And then, you know, going back to this thing, the principals, the assistant principals, the CROs in those schools know about some of the kids and some of the issues that they may be dealing with on a day-in, a day-out basis, and if there's an incident, or if they know that there may be an incident or the potential incident, how can we intervene before it gets to this point? And if it does, how can we separate them? How can we make certain that what might happen outside of the school that comes into the school doesn't erupt into this kind of a situation where it looks like a kid may have been being bullied that ended up taking matters into their own hands?
And Mayor Saffo, we are going to get to that, to talk about some potential solutions for conflict resolution. Judge Corbin is going to be sharing some, you know, really interesting data and programming to talk about that. So yes, we are definitely going to address that today.
And I just want to say again, thank you to the law enforcement. I was there that day, I went to the command center, what Ed and Donnie and the team did was phenomenal, how fast y'all responded, how many people were there. We didn't know what was happening there, you know, having to clear the school out just to make certain there wasn't somebody there that was going through the school, taking shots of people, but this was a night, obviously, an incident that erupted into violence, but I just want to say thank you, and anything that we can do from the city side, we're there.
Thank you very much. Other questions? Yes?
Good morning, everybody. Ultimately, school violence is community violence. Ultimately, school violence is community violence that has crossed the invisible barrier to come onto a campus. Many of the solutions that I know that will be proposed today are quick to implement and need to happen urgently. Others require a long-term strategy. We need to be thinking not either-or, but yes-and, because our kids are worth it. I began my career as a prosecutor here in the, at the time was the 5th prosecutorial district, on April 21st, 1999, that's better known as the day after the Columbine tragedy. In the immediate aftermath of the Newtown tragedy, in February of 2013, as your district attorney, in concert with many of you, I convened a Safer Schools Task Force, a Summit on School Safety. I asked someone who I greatly admire, our chief district court judge, who's also the head of our juvenile division, Jake Corbinning, to chair that task force. They've done incredible work. Madam Chair, I'm here to deliver their report to you, because I hope that we build on this great work. That task force, by the way, even during the pandemic, has still been meeting on a quarterly basis. What we have to recognize is that the violence that the law enforcement, the court officials, we see on a daily basis, that is not something that everyone around this table, everyone in this audience, everyone who's in the sound of my voice sees every day. We have to confront the reality that we live in two worlds here in the Port City, where your zip code can define your reality, where violence is a foreign concept to some and ever-present for others, where there's great wealth pushed up against abject poverty. In those worlds, those realities, they collide when school is back in session. Too frequently, I've seen that today's victim is tomorrow's defendant. I have come to learn that public safety is inextricably bound up with public health, and that the best way we fight crime is by building community. And so what I hope we do moving forward from this is we take this terrible event of four days ago and build on it. We come closer together, we understand we're talking about all of our children, and we understand that the real solutions to preventing school violence is to address community violence. Thank you.
Thank you very much. District Attorney Ben David?
Chair.
Oh, yes, Commissioner Barfield.
Picking back off of what our DA said, you know, with the Safer Schools Task Force that was put together several years ago, after Sandy Hook, we looked at it again and had an update in 2018 to make sure that the county and the schools, and law enforcement were working together, to make sure that things like this wouldn't happen. If they did, we'd have a plan in place. So I want to let parents know, and those that are watching, that we've not been just sitting back on our heels, but we've been very proactive in increasing the number of SROs in our schools, increasing the number of mental health providers in our schools, and providing whatever support is needed to make sure that our public school system has the resources needed to adequately talk to our children. Myself and Chief Deputy Ken Sarwis went to that high school, I think maybe Bill Robinson did as well. And having, and having traveled those halls, you know, understand what it's like to be in school. Having a daughter who was at UNC Charlotte a couple of years ago, when there was a mass gun violence on that campus, and there was a lockdown that took place, and seeing her being rocked by that tragedy gives me a greater insight into what parents are dealing with. To me, it's important that we look at the root causes of violence in our community. Several years ago, the mayor formed the Blue Ribbon Commission on the Division of Youth Violence, looking at the north side of Wilmington, the fact that that's where most, most youth violence is taking place in our community. And deployed resources in that area, and had many people at the table, Ben David was on that board, myself, Bill Cash, and other elected officials, Judge Fason, and other community leaders, focused on how do we reduce violence on the north side? And to me, it's been very successful, putting the right resources in place, coming up with a jobs program, a summer jobs program, to give boys and girls access to seeing what it would be like to work in a normal environment, and make a paycheck, and those kind of things. You know, bringing forth the NERCNC, and making sure that boys and girls have adequate nutrition at home, especially on weekends and in rainy times. For me, those are some of the root causes to what happened this past week. It's been said that this young man had been bullied, and that he knew something was gonna happen that day. It's important that we all listen, and make sure that we're paying attention to the warning signs. It's almost like your car, when your brakes are going out, they start to squeak, and we know what that is. If you don't take care of it, then your rotors go out, then you have a much bigger bill. So it's important that we listen, and not have implicit bias play into how we treat each person that comes into a school when they have an issue. Because as a parent, I've had the same issue with my kids, working in the public school system, when they've had challenges. Even as Commissioner Barfield, I have folks that were pushed back and pushed up based on what I would perceive as a bias of some sort. So it's important that we take the blinders off, and we look at each individual, individual as just that. As they often say, when, talking about county governments, when you see one county, you see one county, when you see one kid, you see one kid, until you understand what the root cause is within. And, I don't know, why does a young man borrow the gun on campus? I know that gun violence is not the way to solve any problem. I want to understand that. I want to understand what makes someone want to bring a gun on campus, and is that the only way that I can defend myself to survive? And making sure, again, that we as adults are listening to the, to the signs, so to speak. But I'm proud that we've put together some of the right resources, and continue to put those things in place for the school system, and been very cooperative with them. Many have called out for metal detectors in our schools, and I don't know how that would work. When you look at New Hanover High School, Laney, Hagerd, Ashley, they're very open campuses. I looked on, on the news and looked around our country, most schools that have metal detectors also have an enclosed fence around those schools. And they're locked in with only a few points of entry into those schools, so how do you do that? And I don't know how you make that happen.
Commissioner Barfield, that's a, a good point, and we are gonna speak to that. I, I think one thing that's gonna be really important coming out of this, and I know that our community wants tangible outcomes from this meeting. And so what I would like to do is, I would like to direct this to Judge Corbinning, if he would be so kind, to share with us some of the programming, some of the data that he knows about our community. I think it's a good starting point for us to be able to talk about some tangible outcomes and steps outside of this meeting. So, thank you.
Sure, thank you, and I'll share with you, I started my day serving coffee at New Hanover High School. Spent some time with teachers, administrators, trying to share coffee and a smile, good word. They are an incredibly resilient group, my hat is off to them, and to all of you who were involved in this, this is a terrible tragedy. But the worst news is, this happens in our community every week. This happens in our community sometimes almost every day. I, I'm dealing with 15, 16, 17-year-olds on a weekly basis who feel like they have to carry a gun for their protection, whose idea of conflict, conflict resolution is, I know you're gonna shoot me, so I'm gonna shoot you first. I listened to a 15-year-old talk about how he felt like he had to shoot 10 rounds in two and a half seconds out of his upstairs window, because if he didn't do it, then somebody in his family might get hurt. I watched the dust in the air at Break Time Billiards, where two rival gangs were involved in a shootout, and the dust was from all the bullets going through the walls. The youngest involved was 15, the oldest was 22. What we have here is community violence, an epidemic of community violence, and in fact, my friend Steve Teske in Clayton County, Georgia, that I've talked with several times this week, caused a pandemic violence. Because we weren't seeing this scale before the pandemic. But kids have lost the protective factor of schools, social workers know how important protective factors are, and school is the most important protective factor in the lives of our children. They lost that pandemic world, and when you lose the, that big protective factor, risk factors ramp up, and we have seen youth violence skyrocketing in our community. So we've got to find a way to address that community violence, or nothing else we do matters. One of the things I urge you to do is to be research-driven. Our Safer Schools Task Force did research. You remember? Starting after Sandy Hook, we did research on what works and what doesn't. For example, metal detectors would not have stopped what happened Monday. It might have changed the location on campus, but it wouldn't have stopped. And the research on metal detectors is that they don't work in preventing school violence like this.
Judge Corbinning, since so many people have asked about that, can you expand on that comment a bit?
Sure. So, so, you know, metal detectors have been used around the country, off and on, you've experienced that in Philadelphia. I was with a professor at the School of Government this week, and when I started talking about what was happening in Wilmington, she started talking about her high school in, in LA that became a prison. Kids felt like they were in jail. Barbed wire, razor wire, metal detectors. But the research is that that doesn't, that doesn't, that doesn't help. Larry Bonney, who may be here, Larry Bonney is a retired FBI agent, and helped work with us on our Safer Schools Task Force. Larry was a behavioralist with the FBI, investigated major school shootings dating back to Texas Tower in his career, had a chance to interview some surviving school shooters. Larry Bonney told us that until you take care of what's inside the building, you're not gonna make schools safe. And what's inside our building is our kids, and our kids are in the community, and so we've got to find a way to take care of them and intervene with that, because otherwise, our efforts will fall short. We've got, we've got to come together and find a way to address community violence. We were, we were, we were doing okay. I think that Chief Williams came to me about a year ago and said, you're, you're gonna start seeing us arrest a lot of kids. It's coming, it's happening, we saw it shift, and it's been, it's been, it's been awful. It's been awful. So, so there are some things out there. You know, there are some intervention strategies out there, and I would, as part of what, as part of what you do as governing boards, I would urge you to, to look at the research on safety, but look on the research across the country about what's out there for intervention. And I brought, I brought, there, there are three in this presentation, I'm not gonna talk about all three, I'm gonna talk about one because it's homegrown in Durham, came, comes out of Chicago, where a group that, that lives in the county health department is actually, community members hired and trained to be violence interrupters, which is a term I love. They actually go and identify a conflict in the community, and they go to try to resolve that conflict, to interrupt the violence so that it doesn't escalate into gunplay. They're trained to mediators, they work on connecting folks that they're working with, with employment, to any other resources that they may need to change their lives. What I don't know is how much it costs, but Durham felt like it was worth the investment. It's called Bull City United, and I'll share just a little bit about Bull City United with you. And I've, I've sent this entire presentation to some leadership, it's got some other really great information in it. Sorry, I didn't, I didn't put this together, but it's, so, so what we're dealing with is a public health issue. And so I would urge you to, as you do this, to make sure that Dave Howard is in the room, our Public Health Director. Because this is, this is about public health, and it's about saving the lives of kids and families in our community, because when this violence is playing out, it's affecting lots of people. I'm glad that you didn't have to see the video that I saw of people scrambling on the floor on a Friday evening, when they were there at, at Break Time Billiards to either bowl or to shoot pool, and instead, families were scrambling on the floor, hiding from bullets. We've got to intervene, and this, this is a way of intervening. It's based on the Cure Violence Model out of, out of Chicago. It's designed to help prevent retaliation, it's one of the things that our law enforcement partners can tell you, that, that when they get intelligence about a shooting, they're immediately looking for what's next. Where's the retaliation shooting gonna be? We've got to find a way to, to mitigate that. It's designed to mediate ongoing conflicts, to keep conflicts cool instead of blowing up, to identify and treat the highest-risk individuals, and we have, we have ways of identifying some of those high-risk individuals. Our law enforcement partners know lots about who's in gangs and what they're doing. And, and this model is designed to help change behaviors, and one of the things that, that, that I've worked on for years, that we have worked on for years, is finding ways to keep kids in school, deal with behavior when and where it happens, to change the behavior for the better, right? Well, we've got to do that in our community too. We've got to find a way to do that. We've had a lot of success doing that at school, only we haven't really been in school in a year, in a year and a half, right? To, it's designed to help get needed social services and other services, employment, to turn things to a positive. You know, some of the particularly young men that I talk with, who are 15 or 16, see their life expectancy as 21 or 22. I can sort of remember when I was 21. But what a terrible way to live, and we've got to flip that, that can't be the norm, right? So, this is what the team looks like, they've got a supervisor, they've got a team of violence interrupters, and then outreach workers, the violence interrupters get out there in the community and actually do these mediations. They live in public health, they are very non-traditional county employees, Manager Kudry. Some of them are former gang members, they are homegrown in the community, so that when they go into the community, they've got what we could call street cred, people know them, but they're trained to intervene and trained to do something different. They actually started in two most violent census tracts in Durham, they started being data-driven. They looked at what was happening where, just like Mayor, you guys did with the Blue Ribbon Commission, you were data-driven on that. Well, Durham was data-driven, and they went into the two most violent census tracts in Durham based on gunfire, homicides, gunshots. And they looked at how many crimes per person, and, and they took the number one and two. It's hard to see this data, but, but they did respond, and they, they have seen a significant drop in, in shootings. They still have shootings, but they've seen a significant drop, and our goal is to see things change, and to take a step, at least one step, in the, in the, in the right direction. They have done, when I say they get out there, they get out there. Two, and, and this is, this is just January through April of this year, I was talking with these folks back in, I think it was May, 233 conflict mediations in that first, basically just first four months of the year. And those personal altercations, that 45%, those personal altercations, those are things that then lead to retaliatory shootings, right? So if we respond to the personal altercations, and find a way to positively deal with that, and change that behavior, and prevent then that retaliation, then we potentially save a life or lives. So, and you see that number, look at that number, 61% of the mediations involve conflicts that were likely or very likely to result in a shooting? I, I think that's something that could work in our community. I think that is a positive, and it's evidence-based, based on the Cure model, it's something that can work in our community, that can make a difference, and to stop things in our community from spilling into our schools. I, I'm weary of shootings. I see it every week, it breaks my heart, for so many reasons, including for the young person who feels like they have to carry a gun for their sake. For the mom who begs me to keep her son confined so that he won't die. 15-years-old, and she wants me to keep him confined so he won't die. What a terrible place that that family feels. So, I hope to have somebody from Bull City United available for us this morning. I was in Chapel Hill, I enjoyed spending the morning talking to some of my friends the other morning. But Deputy Secretary Billy Laster, from the Department of Public Safety, the number-one juvenile guy in the state, is willing to work with our community, try to connect us to Bull City United, to either get them here, get us there, get us together on Zoom, whatever, to, to, to learn more about what they're doing, why they're doing it, their data, the cost, because we gotta, we gotta know that. But, at some point, what price? It's been successful in Durham, they've seen, I think I've got another slide that may show. This is some of the outcomes. 91% of their participants were connected to employment, and as we connect young people to employment, then we change that trajectory of leaving "I'm only gonna live" to 21 or 22, right? We create hope, and hope is the foundation of so much of what we do. Services were, were put in place, 79% showed gun-related behavior change. Can I say hallelujah? Can I say hallelujah in this community one day, when we see 79% change in gun-related behavior? I think that's, that's worth us taking a hard look at, and being willing to engage. I think that's it for, that's it for that, that presentation, but there's some other resources. There's a hospital-based intervention program out of Virginia that's designed for victims, because our, our victims become defendants, District Attorney Ben David. And the hospital-based intervention program has put services in place to work with gunshot victims, to change their trajectory in life, so that then they're not becoming defendants. So that they are, then becoming so that then they're not becoming defendants, so that they are then becoming successful. The Gabby Gibbard Center out of Texas has some other resources. Most of those resources that are set out in this are more statewide. But I think there are other things out there, but over the last three days, this is what I could find for you. So, I'm happy to try to answer any questions about this, but I'm also happy to, to make sure that you guys are connected to Bull City United so that you can find out more about it and, and get together with that team and, and find out more. I know that Dave Howard has spoken to the Public Health Director in Durham about it. Durham is still on fire about this. I think it started in 2016, still having success. So, thank you for the opportunity to be with you today.
Thank you so much for that presentation, Judge Corpenning. Uh, let me, um, let me come over here to, to Vice Chair Hayes, and then we'll come over to Vice Chair Bulley, please.
Thank you so much. Judge Corpenning, thank you. As you were speaking, tears well happened in my eyes. I'm a, I'm a parent. I'm a member of this community, and I can't thank you for your service and what you're doing. And I'm here to fully support you and, and programs that you, we need very desperately in this community. I wanted to ask you, I heard something loud and clear come from your remarks. I heard that schools were the protective environment. And we need to have our children in school, face-to-face, not remote, that that is effective. I heard that loud and clear. Am I correct on that?
Absolutely. I've, I've talked with Superintendent about that. I've talked with Chair Adams about that. You know, because at the start of the pandemic, I didn't have any, any kids confined in, in New Hanover County, not one. And I think I've got a dozen or more right now confined because of shooting at people. The pandemic has a toll, taken a toll in so many ways, and it has taken a toll on our youth. I'm, I'm so grateful that our kids are back in school for, for so many reasons, but this is, this is one.
Thank you for that, because I know that there's been some requests for remote learning, and I wanted to highlight that. Thank you for, for sharing those comments.
Thank you, Madam Chair.
Pleasure. Ms. Bulley.
Veronica, thank you. Thank you for being here. While you were talking, sir, I just kept thinking about September 11th and how we used to have security measures when we went to the airport before September 11th. You'd go and check in. And then 9/11 happened, and the world changed. And I don't think, what, what I'm hearing everybody say is we're doing wonderful things, and we don't really need to reinvent the wheel when it comes to violence in our community and our schools, because we're, we're doing some things. But the pandemic has changed everything with regards to our children. I mean, school is an anchor. It is the anchor for the lives of our kids. And we see this uptick correlated with this prolonged closure. And what I think we need to do is look at ways not to reinvent the wheel, but I mean, maybe we're on a bicycle, and we need to put it on a tundra. This is a long-term problem, and I know Commissioner Barfield has been doing work in the North Side community to address these issues. We have the Safer Schools Task Force. But I think we really need to look at those and really expand them, really build them up in a way that we're, we're not prepared to do yet, but I hope at the end of this meeting we are prepared to do. Because I, I think this is, it is an epidemic of violence, and we need to be prepared for it and fix it.
Ms. Crable.
Yeah, I, I wanted to expand on that just a little bit because the, again, I wanted to ask Judge Corpenning in a minute, what are some of the comparisons that you've seen with the work that we did with the Blue Ribbon Commission? We started that in 2008. Tufana was our first director. Ben David and, and Bill Sappo, you know, were part of that. We put together plans, you know, to get the, and we were kind of on course, and we were really, you know, it, that was back when, when gang violence was at its height, and that's why it was developed. And I was thinking that what, we used Durham as one of our models when we were there because they recognized that they had low-performing schools, and lo and behold, they have violence. Well, New Hanover County was looking at violence, and lo and behold, our lowest-performing schools were in there. So it looks like there's a lot of similarities between their school system and ours. And we had the Safe Schools Task Force after Sandy Hook. So we've got lots of groundwork that is set. And, you know, I'm an industrial engineer, you know, so it's like, why do we, we don't need to reinvent the wheel. We've got some good programs. And if this program looks like it can take some elements of what we've already got, so we don't have to, like, retrain on everything, perhaps we do need refreshers. But, so do you have any, that, I know, I know there's a lot of programs that we've done. Does, did anything jump out at you that was different? Because we still would have had in the Blue Ribbon Commission those, those violence interruptors. You know, we had some of those people, we didn't call them that, but it, they were there. So is there anything that jumps out at you that would be a good starting point for us?
So I think that, that, that we obviously need to continue that good work. There are so many steps that we've taken together, leadership by the county and by the schools, to support our kids in the building, to make things better for them, because I think that's, that remains at the heart of school safety. And as we continue to build our student support services staff, I think that's incredibly important. The, the training that, that you guys have done on social-emotional learning during the pandemic, the pivot that you guys did to deliver that to our staff is so incredible because they are much more trauma-focused now, and, and identifying those warning signs is so important. Building those trusted relationships in our building so that, so that when there's text chatter about Billy's got a gun, then somebody's going to that trusted adult in the building and saying Billy's got a gun, right? That's one of the things we learned from Larry Bonney is that, 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 that the school shooters felt like they didn't have anybody they could talk to in the building, but also there were kids that knew about virtually every single school shooting but didn't have a trusted adult they felt they could go to to talk to. So I think building on that is important, but, but we've got to think in a big, I think we've got to think in a bigger picture. We've really got to get out in the community and address the community violence. We've got to do that.
And to follow up with that, too, our school system does have, for people who are listening, our school system does have work groups there in place. We've got our crisis management team that our Director of Safety supervises and manages. That is an inter-agency organization. You know, Lieutenant Smith sits on that with us. FEMA, not FEMA, the Director of Emergency Management, you know, has a representative there. We have the SHAC, the School Health Advisory Team, and one of their goals, I happen to be on that team too, one of their goals is social-emotional learning and mental health services. And that is a inter-agency group. So there are, like, there are things that we have in place that we can all take a look at, those goals, and merge them together. So we, we do have a good foundation. We just have to kind of merge them and, and not operate in our silos, which we are so used to doing, more of a Venn diagram. You know, where do we overlap? And you do yours, you do yours, but we're all coming here together in the middle to, you know, lower crime and to, you know, protect our students.
Thank you. I'm actually, uh, District Attorney David, if you don't mind, I'm going to have, uh, the chair is, is going to speak next, and then we'll come over.
Thank you. First, I want to thank everyone for coming, and especially you guys, Corpenning. The commissioners came here today to, to take action. We consider this an absolute healthcare crisis, a, it's an emergency in our community. And I got a lot of flak for selling the hospital. But I did it to help us, to get better healthcare, absolutely. But we also have a pot of money that we're sitting on that we can access when we have crises in our community. Kids are being shot at school. This is a crisis. They're being shot in the streets. It's a crisis. So I would like to make a motion that allows the county manager to access part of the, not all of it, part of whatever amount necessary to $350 million that we have set aside to address this crisis that we have in our community. I know that we don't want to know their trade secrets. I don't expect to know, but what we expect, I think we all expect, is Sheriff Euler J. Dr. Faust, Citi, Chris, all of y'all to work together behind the scenes, Ben, to figure this out and come up with solutions to keep, not only keep our kids safe at school, to make sure they're safe in the streets. This is a community epidemic. And so I'd like to move that, um, be allowed to access a substantial, whatever amount of money they can be to, to make sure that we address this problem and investigate this.
Can I say something?
Commissioner Rabinberg.
Just to make sure everybody knows, it's not the $1.3 billion that we're talking about.
Yes, the $350 million.
But not the, not the money that's...
No, it's not the foundation money. It's the money that the commissioners have for...
Right. I just want everybody else to know that.
Is that a second?
A second.
Thank you. Is there any discussion?
I would chime in that, um, you know, as Judge Corpenning was speaking, the BRC, the Boys Youth Council, has some of those components in place now. We have community outreach advocates that were somewhat in your boots on the ground that would actually go into homes and work with families and, and help them transition from point A to point B. I think collaborating with some of those groups, you don't have to re-infit the wheel, so to speak, but recognize that there are some organizations already on the ground that can help aid in this conversation. It would be great to expand the Boys Youth Council from the North Side to all of Maryland County, provide a summer jobs program that, again, gives the boys and girls, and you mentioned jobs, exposure to greater things that will hopefully give them the desire to go to college and provide for themselves and for their families. Just some comments.
Ms. Zappel.
Thank you. I think we heard today's meeting here that the increase of law enforcement is not sustainable. As much as it worked in the immediate, we cannot flood our schools with sheriffs, police officers, et cetera. Metal detectors, the data shows, they don't work. Remote learning, which I know we've heard a lot about too, is send our kids home to make them safe. That just increases the isolation. And I think we've heard clear evidence today that that doesn't work either. So in lieu of that, what I did hear with Judge Corpenning is this initiative through the Bull City United. And it sounds like it has a lot of the very promising things that we need right here in this community. So, Madam Chair, I stand in full support of the funding that we need to get Bull City United initiative. I'm sure it has a better name than that, and, and to bring this into our community as another tool. And I'm sure it's not the only tool. But, you know, and if we need to, you know, pay for more to do it, to address this in a, let's do something to try and address this within our community and certainly within our schools. We have got to make the schools a safe environment for learning. Thank you.
Ms. Commissioner Zappel.
Yeah, I'm finished, yes.
I'm so sorry, I'm going to interrupt you. Thank you so much, and certainly Commissioner Barfield and Commissioner Rabinberg, and Commissioner Zappel, your thoughts. I just, I wanted to make sure and clarify that we are, what we want to do is give our county manager the authority to access those funds because we want to give you what you need to ensure the safety of our students, our parents, our teachers, our staff, our volunteers, and all of our schools, and also in our community wide. This is, this is an epidemic, and we need to ensure the safety of all of our citizens. And we all need to work together. And I just wanted to make sure that that was well-known. What we were doing was to give Mr. Kudry the opportunity to access those funds.
Thank you. Anything else? There's a motion in the second. All in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? I'm just curious. Turn it back over to you, now.
I'm just going to say thank you. My heart is beating out of my chest right now. I'm sorry. I think everyone at this table has probably spoken with somebody that was impacted on Monday, whether it was a student, whether it was staff. The stories that have come out of Monday are stories of strength, but they're also stories of fear. I spoke with one teacher that said it's burned in her memory of the time that she closed the closet door on her students as part of the protocol. What you have just done and which you have approved is going to give this community the opportunity to begin to solve this problem. And from the Board of Education, I cannot thank you enough for that because none of us, parents, community members, none of us want our kids or our staff to ever go through this, ever. Thank you for sharing, sorry, I'm shaking. Thank you for sharing these, um, these options. I look forward to the county manager and our superintendent working together as we collect research and data, as you bring forward opportunities to implement into our schools. And the board is behind you and supports the options that you feel are best for our schools and our community. Thank you, Madam Chair.
All right.
Yes, sorry.
As your district attorney and as a father, thank you for your spontaneous write-out. It was the right thing to do. Don't forget about the thin blue line when you're funding. Let me say that crime and education has always been inversely related. Two out of three people in our jail tonight in New Hanover County are high school dropouts. Keeping them in school is everything. Commissioner Barfield mentioned the work that many of us around this table have done for years. Ms. Crable, you were there at the early stages. In our youth enrichment zone, we didn't pick that place, it picked us. We did what's called crime mapping. That's where you look at not only reported crime, but unreported crime. We can literally count gunshots in this city now because of ShotSpotter data. We found the highest area of crime, and we went to that. And what we did is we reduced it by 28% over the next three years by increasing graduation rates by the same number. There's no question that what our chief district court judge has said is, is a best practice that can import here. There's more moving vans coming from Durham here than here over to there. So we're not saying we're trying to be Durham. We're trying to say if something works, we should be doing it. There are private groups already doing this type of intervention. It needs to have the transparency and trust, and most importantly, the data of government behind it. And when we talk about crime mapping, let's not forget resource mapping. I urge whatever group is put together to turn to Cape Fear Collective, the nonprofit that was started under the roof of Live Oak Bank. If you see the work that they have been doing for two and a half years and the data that they've been tracking for 30 different points of health that tie right into public safety, I believe that we have the best model moving forward to spend some of the money you're talking about to focus on prevention, to focus on being proactive and not reactive. And I'm so glad that this moment is here, even though it took a tragic series of events to bring us together.
Ms. Waugh.
Hey, thank you. I feel a lot of good discussion, and I appreciate all that you guys are doing. And I definitely know there are a lot of components to this. But one thing that you did say, you were, you brought up was poverty. And what we're butted up against, and this is a community issue, and I really think that, you know, no one is to talk about early, early education. I know there are a few people that understand the importance of education, but it begins early. So I hope some of that money goes to early education kids. And focusing on parts of the community that need the resources and the schools that need the resources around it. When we redistricted about 10 years ago, we changed our model. We, we hyper-segregated socio-economically schools that were, you know, high-poverty areas. And, you know, it all leads to test scores and all that stuff. But really, when you, when you're on the ground there, you got to get into the community. You got to see where we can start early. We're talking about preventative measures now, and it's all important. But I, I believe early education and really going in these communities and supporting those communities where we can start from the bottom up, we might not have some of these issues, you know, in the end. So I hope some of that money can go towards that, and it, there's so many components to it.
Yes, oh, I'm sorry. Yes, Dr. Faust.
So I did want to address our parents who are here. We are, we know that the, the parents are wanting answers. Parents of New Hanover High School. We are planning a parent meeting to have a conversation with them. That is in the, in the works. So I don't want them to think that this is the end. We're going to meet with them. We've got to find, with COVID, we've got to find a, a place where we can. We may have to do multiple meetings, but that is in the works by the end of next week.
And are there any other steps that the, the school system is taking that you can share at this point, just for immediate action or things that are going on that you'd like the community to know about in light of Monday's incident?
Oh, absolutely. We, if, we are meeting with parents, if they're individual parents and they are coming to the school, we are sending people over. The principal, the administration is more than happy to sit down and have a conversation with individual parents at this time. We are wanting to engage with that, that school community and have, you know, just honest conversations on the needs. We're also reaching out to their PTA, or PTO, to help us get the word out. And we're going to be asking them to be a little more present in the schools and what do we need to do to help... in the schools and what do we need to do to help them. We're also going to be reaching out to individuals. One of the things that helped in some of the schools where I was in Houston were, and I'll say it, we hadn't actually discussed it. We looked at our fire, firemen. And so, they work twenty-four, I think it's twenty-four on or twenty-four off or however that works. And so, in their off time, we pay them as hall monitors to be a part of our school, part of our setting. So, I'm a plea for our fire department to get them into the schools and work with us also. But those are some of the things that we're going to be talking about with our, our parents, who, some of the people that they shall possibly see in their building on a daily basis. And we've had this thing called Parent Patrol inside of our buildings. And so, not, maybe not in these buildings, but in buildings. And so, those are things that we are going to want to train people on. And we have several mechanisms, and we want to push people to be able to say it, say something. Students, as, as Judge was saying, just being comfortable in telling. And there are anonymous ways to get information to us. We have, the sheriff's office talked about Crime Stoppers. Those, those mechanisms work. And so, it doesn't, there's an enemy in, in some of that. Well, and if you choose not to say, you don't, we're not going to ask you, how did you find out where, if you are telling us, we're looking to solve it and fix it. So, we do ask for you to use those protocols. We have them in the, in the school, in, in the school district. So, we want those to happen. But those are going to be things that we're going to talk about with our parents. And I know parents have burning questions, and they want to talk, and we want to talk to you. So, we will definitely have meetings set up for, for parent meetings.
Madam Vice Chair.
That is wonderful because communication is the key. I mean, we all don't have all the answers right now, but we need to communicate with each other. So, thank you for that. I would also like to suggest that maybe we bring student leadership into those conversations as well. They're, they're boots on the street, and they know what's going on inside that school and all schools better than any of us. And I think they can be an invaluable resource and assistance in, in helping to secure. And the one thing that I've continued to hear from the students is, that is our school. And they're incredibly proud of New Hanover High School. And they want to see it be the best that it can be. And I think that is so courageous.
I'm going to come over here to Mr. McManus and Mr. Will DeBor, Commissioner Barfield, Commissioner Zappel.
Obviously, it's been a lot of outstanding things said. There's a lot of, lot of power and experience in this room. I wish we had met many years earlier, but now is the perfect time. Judge Corpen comes with an unbelievable background of experience. I appreciate what you said and how quickly you tried to at least offer another alternative. There are so many things that we have in our school system and in our community that we need to access. Leave nothing unturned. Most importantly, and I think that the judge, you said it best, until we resolve some of the issues in our community, they will not, they will continue to come into the schools. As a high school principal for many years, and a very, very large high school principal, where I actually took three guns in my life off of students, did not have a shooting, thank God. I can tell you that it's going to be very difficult to prevent it as long as it is in the community and it is an answer. And so, what I'd like to say is hopefully out of this will come priorities. And it's very important what is first and second and third and fourth, or the first three, or however you want to do it. And then collectively, I'll focus this energy and this constructive meeting towards those priorities. And it's all for the kids. It's all for the students, and that's why we're here. And so, I just, I'm amazed and excited about the energy in this room right now. And so, hopefully, we will focus. And I have to close with one thing. The most challenging and difficult thing to me professionally in my life as a high school principal, and I believe most principals would agree today, is social media. We have a state law, if I remember, about bullying. But when you ask someone to go to the police, problem line is when they ask me, well, then I'll be all over social media. They eat me alive. I said, yes, they will. I'm not going to lie to you. So, I'd like to ask you, those in the law enforcement arena, what in God's world can we do to get hold of those that are harassing and bullying and creating, amplifying these issues? That is something we've got to focus on. It will not go away. Thank you.
First off, I'd like to thank everybody for being here. I think this is an outstanding group, and I think it'd be wonderful that we put our heads together to help our students. And that's the focus I think we all have today. Dr. Faust, I just had a question. Have we given any thought to an outside consultant coming in, a safety consultant coming in, looking at our campuses to identify problematic areas? You know, starting maybe at the high schools, but then working our way through all the schools. I know when I was in another county, we actually had a safety team and one of the folks on the safety team at the schools. We had an inside group so we could see our own problems, but we had an outside group come in to see about, you know, outside problems. Give me any thought to that?
We have, we have, of course. And then there's, there's some that we've had in the past. We need to take a look at that and see what has been updated and making sure. So, yes, yes, there has been conversations about that.
Coming over here, Commissioner Barfield.
Again, my friend, Judge Corpen, back in 2015, he launched the School Justice Partnership. It was designed to reduce student misbehavior and also ease, ease strain on our courts with juveniles coming in. And there were thirteen agencies that were part of that that came and actually signed a document working to make sure that we're not bringing kids into the criminal justice system automatically, but finding other ways to ease the strain on them. And then that was ratified back in 2018. I think when you label a kid, it puts them on the wrong path to begin with. So, if you can keep them out of the course, find other ways to deal with their misbehavior, it sets them on the right course. There's been a lot of conversation around the suspension of four, five, and six year, and seven year olds. I think that's something that we definitely want to take a look at as well. Because the foundation, and again, I want to talk about the foundation. How do we get here? If you go back to the foundation, the root of things, you know, if you put a kid on the wrong course at an early age, they may internally think that maybe I'm not a good kid. But if you tell that kid and reinforce that you are a good kid, it would change their whole thought process and their whole outcome. You know, try to use the right words and right words of affirmation to reinforce good behavior with our young boys and girls. And oftentimes, interaction with the court system, interaction with suspensions only puts a person on the wrong path as opposed to the right path. So, hopefully, our school system will look at the suspension rate with those that are four, five, and six and seven years as well.
Thank you, Commissioner Barfield. Thank you, sir. And Commissioner Zappel.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I'd like to reinforce what Commissioner Barfield just said about pre-K education and getting to our youth early. It's something that we at the County Commission have been supportive of, and our attempts again this year to, not attempts, to actually double the number of pre-K classes. I hope that just increases and accelerates. I, I did just want to reemphasize as we get near the end of this meeting. I, I think I heard in the early summary of what, what went on is some, taking a harder look or reexamining the reunification plan, the emergency plan that we had in place here. It worked, but I, I know by the volume of questions that I've received from members of our community that just taking another look at that will help to raise the confidence level of a number of people in, in our community on that. So, I appreciate your efforts on doing that. I also had one very, you know, detailed question. I noted that the catwalk over at New Hanover High School has been shut down. I was wondering, how, how are the students getting back and forth across Market Street as a result of that closure? Is, is there a plan in place, or how, how does that work?
So, I don't want to answer any safety issues. I can talk to you afterwards.
Okay. Very good. All right. Thank you.
Just very briefly, I know as a board, we had talked recently about adding a student member, and we were really ready to go on that. I would just like to reemphasize the importance of a student voice, given all that we have experienced this past week. I mean, it was important before, and I would really like to get that done as soon as possible. And the other piece I would just add is, you know, I, I don't want to have one meeting and move on and do good things and nobody talk about it. I would really like, as a group, to come back together in the beginning of December and talk about the concrete steps we've taken and the concrete steps we're going to continue to take as we move forward to make sure that everybody is safe and secure in our community.
You actually read my mind. That was going to be my next question to Dr. Faust.
I cheated on my page.
What is a viable timeline? Now that we know that we have this very generous offer from this vote from the County Commission, what is a viable timeline for us to say, we're going to go out, do some research, we're going to work with our partners, we're going to start devising some ideas that we'd like to bring back as recommendations? Is December, does December make the most sense, or is there something that we could possibly do sooner? What are your thoughts?
As soon as county managers, judge, sheriff's office, we can all get together. I mean, December or prior to, I think the, the community would say December is too far out.
I agree.
And so, we're going to be working as soon as possible. I would say we would be giving updates. And so, I would say we could give an update as soon as, and this will be, this is just me thinking out loud, which I hate to do on, when I'm on the record, late September, early October, as to where we are. I think we could possibly give some opportunities of what we are looking into and what we're, what road we're going down because, yeah.
As far as I'm concerned, as soon as I hit this gavel, your work begins.
Okay, okay.
Okay? There's, there's no set time to report back. Your work begins as soon as we hit the gavel. It hasn't already.
Quarterly. We talked about that before.
We need to meet quarterly anyway. Right. So, potentially, would everyone, now, the County Committee, the County Commission and the Board of Ed have talked about doing quarterly meetings, but I really think that this group that is here today, I would really like to see this group be able to reconvene because this is a community issue. We all continue to say it. It's not one entity. It's every single one of us is part of this solution. And it's also our community as a whole on the outside that's not sitting at this table. And so, you know, I think that I'd like to see personally, you know, getting input from our outside stakeholders, our parents, you know, the information that's coming back from those parent forums that are going to be occurring, to be able to report out on some of that information as well. But I really would like to see all of these people back at the table, if you are open to that, to continue this dialogue as we continue to look at solutions. Yes, Dr. Faust.
One thing I do want to say is that we don't have any verification of bullying. We will be asking the school, but that wasn't something that we were aware of from the principal's office. So, I just want us to be clean on it. I don't, there is no indication where we knew. And so, I'll be working with the principal to find out. And if there were bullying measures in place, that will be taken care of also. What I can say is that anyone who has been involved or was involved, and we're still, they have no place in our school. So, that I will say, speaking from the superintendent's seat. We will not be allowing individuals back in the building. We will be providing them some alternative measures that they will have to learn. But those students who were involved in this will not be back in our building. And so, I want our community to understand, our students to understand, this is serious. And we are going to work hard. I understand the side of doing turnaround work. I never thought that this would, I always talk about, the turnaround work here is different. But we're running into some of the things that I have seen in other places where I've worked. And we do have to take a firm stand on certain things that will be allowed and will not be allowed. And, you know, we, bullying is never going to be allowed. So, if someone is bullying, there are safe places that you can do, and that, we can handle that. So, yeah, we may say that social media has a presence, but we also have due diligence in our, as, as an administrator, as an adult. There are ways that I can handle things, or teachers can handle things, that does not lead back to someone who's told. We know how to do that. So, I don't want anyone to think that I can't tell anyone because I'm going to be bullied or I'm going to be harassed even more. That's not true. We can fix that. But what I can say is, when it comes to this, there is never an opportunity, there should have never been an opportunity or never should there have been a gun on that campus. And so, when someone is saying that they, the only thing they can lean to is a gun, there are so many adults on that campus. There are so many officers there. There are so many, we have, and I have to say this to our parents, parents, you have to come to the school. You have to tell someone if your child is not feeling the way that they need to feel because that's where all of these people here are sitting. It's like, how did we get here? We got here because no one was telling anyone. And so, I have to say that because I don't want people to think that we were not being a safe haven for students. We have mental health counselors, multiple mental health counselors. We have additional counselors at our school. Individuals only go on the school ground for two days. That's all. Two days. And they brought this to our campus in two days. So, when we're looking back to see that, oh, well, we were at fault, we're not blaming anyone. What we're saying is there are mechanisms in place for people to say, this person is bothering me. This is bothering me. And no one knows what you're talking to that person about. I've had students email me to say, hey, I want to talk to you. I reached back out to them. They email me back. I'm not sharing that information with the individuals. I'd go to the principals and say, I need for this to be taken care of. There are ways, students have my email address. So, I know if they can get to me without their friends knowing, we can do it. So, I don't want us to sit around and say that we're not doing anything. We can get the safe places, the safe spots when we need to, but we have to talk about it. But I don't want us to walk away from here and say that we are a playground filled with bullies, and that's not true. That bullying does happen. I don't want to say that it doesn't. But what I want us to say is that there are things in place that has been proactive to handle those. So, again, just help us, help the community by saying that if that is happening, please reach out to, you can reach out to a counselor, you can reach out to a teacher, you can reach out to a bus driver. You can, there are people, they know how to get to the bottom of this. And it does not have to be the person's name attached. We know how to handle that.
Thank you, Dr. Faust. All right, probably final comments for the day.
Yes, I have one question to clarify in the, the funding that we are going to be, have access to. I wanted to just reiterate on what our DA said about how the funds will be used. And I guess I'm looking at some of the partners that we already are involved with, like, you know, communities and schools, the, the police department or the sheriff's department and their elements program, any of our mental health providers that we use, that we have MOUs with. So, would this funding include those kind of agencies that we are already working with in our school system?
Your school system's not getting funding for three hundred and fifty million.
No, no, no. I mean, but, well, if, if we ask you, so maybe clarify that for me.
Madam Chair, if I could speak to it. What I understood the charge from the board to be is to use these resources to address community violence. Because what happened Monday is not a law enforcement problem. It's not a school problem. It's a symptom of a community issue that, that we choose to use violence to solve problems. And so, what we're going to do is look at putting together a whole range of strategies led conceptually by what the judge has identified, to, to come up with interventions that address violence. Because if we can address that, we limit or end the potential for the problem on a school campus or in the perimeter of a school. So, I couldn't sit here today and say how those dollars will be invested. And, and I know the board well enough to know that they give us the latitude to, to not look at this simply as a grant-making operation. We're not going to solve any problems if we go out and give this agency fifty thousand and that one a hundred and fifty thousand unless there's a comprehensive set of solutions identified that have to be evidence-based. And, and I want to channel people smarter than me, Commissioner Barfield, our deputy manager, our diversity and equity chief. We have to flip the script. I, I'm concerned that we're going to bring the solutions from the top down. We have to flip. to flip the script and ask students, teachers, parents, what makes you feel comfortable? Community that faces violence on a daily basis, what do you need to help change the contours and the direction in our community? And, and so we have to, certainly have to have the leadership, and you've offered that, there is sound policy, but we have got to flip the script and, and view this. And so it can't be a grant-making operation, it has to be informed with strategies that solve not a problem, but the problem of community violence. Monday was a symptom of a bigger problem, and, Madam Chair, I think we have to take that perspective.
Thank you. With that, thank you. I was just a little unclear. Thank you very much. With that, if there's nothing further for the commissioners, gentlemen, you have the ball. This meeting is adjourned. You have something? I move to adjourn.